Your knowledge.
Well Patty, thanks for coming in. Maybe we do introductions around.
Nicole, I'm the editor.
Hi Nicole.
We met once before.
I think we met on the street somewhere because I was talking to you about schools.
Was it schools? I don't remember.
Yes, the graduation rates and you know how I graduated from Hepner High, 48th in my class, went to the University of Oregon, I was on the dean's list. You know, there was no transition problem and yet in today's world you hear about Oregon kids and 25% of them that go to college you need, were media help. I haven't, I don't think I met anyone in person.
Chris Miller.
Chris, pleasure, thank you. Yes, anyway, it was on the streets.
Yeah.
And I was, you were very refreshing and I was, you know, really happy to meet you.
Oh great, I appreciate that, thanks. So usually we just start off getting you, giving you a couple of minutes to tell us why you're running and why others should support you.
Okay, I'm actually running because of the financial excess funds in our county. I mean, which is a very unusual problem, but I don't know if you are aware of it or not, but property tax bills in the last, the property tax fund in the last 12 years is up 60%. Has your income got up 60%? I actually have heard from many taxpayers in Descheds County and their monthly allocation for property taxes is higher than their mortgage. They are being priced out of our county. And I think that's, I think that's extremely significant. I really believe that we need to be very aware of what we're doing. The, actually, the property tax beginning balance of the working capital, the cash at the first year, is up over $106 million in the last 12 years.
And what do you attribute that to?
I, you know what, I, I don't know. You know, the budget is online, you can see their 17, 18 budget. It actually increased $15 million from 17 to 18 per budget. I didn't see actual 17 numbers yet, but, but it increased 15 million in one year. And so I, I think we really need to get to the bottom of it and find out why our county seems to be bringing a lot of funds in. I knew some people, Janet and Dennis Storgen, who are working, were working closely on budgets for the year, about two years ago, I believe. And they were talking about it at that time and I probably needed to pay more attention to what their work was, but I've, I've called them, so I'm waiting to hear back from them to get a little more of their insight.
The first thing that came to my mind is that something like a dozen or more people are moving to the county, to Bend every day, so I'm not sure.
Right, no, the population has increased 24% in the last 12 years, but the actual, and you think, okay, so the population's increased 24%, but let's say half of those people, maybe not half, but a good portion, maybe 40% of those people live together. So, you know, so we have so many more houses that are, you know, getting into the property tax mix, but still, that doesn't quite answer why it's gone up 60%. Because seven was before the downturn and, you know, we had the downturn and then the property tax values have gone up. I talked to people and their property tax bill is like, you know, 800 a month. They have some land, they live in a teeny little house, but they're paying $800 a month for the privilege of living here.
So.
But then there's like this, there's another side of it too, you know, where we have the STCs. I call them the sleep disorder centers. My husband was an ear, nose and throat doctor. So anyway, we have the STCs. In Redmond, it's 18,000 to build a house now, it's 15,000 in Sisters, and it's over 21,000 in Bend, you know, we've got all these.
That's combined with city and county though, correct?
Right, well yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, it all adds up, okay. There's a lot of things why we've accumulated a lot more money in our fund. And I honestly, I think it's going to take a lot more work, but I did, I was, when I saw the difference, I, you know, $15 million more in one year, I think that's rather significant. So I really think someone needs to be looking at it. Because I hear from people, I heard from the lady at Safeway the other day, she's leaving. She's been here for 13 years, she can no longer afford to stay here. She's moving to Nevada because it's a lot less to live there. And when you take longer to, you know, let's say get your building permit or whatever, everything adds to the cost. I built a house before and I know when you build a house in so many months, it's, you know, your financing charges and everything aren't accumulating, you're not having to pay it somewhere else. And when it takes you twice as long to get your permit, that all adds to the cost of housing. What is it, $424,000 now for, to buy a house in Bend is the median price?
Well, I'm curious, just based on what you're saying, if you're, I'm curious about what parts of the budget you would propose to cut, because I know one of the things they want to add is another, another building, person to handle the permitting through the county.
They just added two new people. No, they just did add two new people. I know that the amount of permits has tripled from 14 to now. And yet, the other day, someone had a couple of houses to put on the rental market and they said, oh my gosh, there's over 100 houses now on the rental market. So are people already starting to leave because the costs have gotten so high?
What do you mean by there's 100 of?
There were 100 available houses on the rental market. And I knew somebody a month, a year ago, who was really desperately searching for something available. So I, I don't have a point of comparison yet, but that's something I'm going to find out in the next week or two.
But you think the rental, what you're saying is that there's more rental availability in the county now?
According to this woman's, her comment to me, and I, you know, I did call a Realtor this weekend that's in that part of the industry to see, and I haven't heard back from her yet. But this was just from someone else who has rental homes. So, you know, it's always, it's, you know, it's always a balance. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to price the people that have lived here forever out of the market. And I, you know, I hear that. When somebody's lived here 20 years and their property tax bill is so high now, they said, we're going to have to leave.
So I'm curious about, well, a couple of follow-ups based on that, but can you talk a little bit about your experience and why you think you're qualified to be a county commissioner?
Okay, I actually passed the CPA exam in the dark ages, when you couldn't use a calculator. I had to use that, you had to do all.
You had an abacus?
No, I know, I know. You had to do all your numbers by hand. Okay, this is, this is like really ancient history. My high school teacher, I was a treasurer, and he said, oh, you should be a CPA. I go, oh, computers will, they'll get rid of them. So of course, I didn't listen to him and I went to college, got a degree in history, graduated a term early. The economy was really horrible at that time and my mom goes, oh, you better go to business school. So I went to business school for a term, I guess it was, and quickly realized that I needed to go back and get my CPA. The good news was, you could do it by just taking accounting. I had to pick up the math, you know, statistics and things. And, but I passed, you know, I took the CPA and I had it for a long time. I did a lot of CPA classes and I worked in accounting. And one thing that I really know I have been excellent at is raising money for nonprofits. When you're, when you are in, I was non-paid, but when you are working on charities, I raised it for hospitals, for schools, even for a road once, I raised a hundred thousand for a road. The bottom line is so important and I think that I am very careful. The, the little Catholic school in Malibu, I did their fundraiser two years in a row. And then they asked me to do it the third year, nobody does it more than one. And I'm like, and they're like, oh my gosh Patty, when you do something, I work, I grew up working. I had my first job at four.
So you said you grew up in Hepner?
Hepner, Eastern, yeah, on the ranch.
And then you went to OWF?
I'm a doc.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
And then what did you do after you graduated from ELO?
Well, that's when I went to business school for one term. And then I actually was married and I lived in Windville, Washington.
Okay.
Got my, my CPA is from Washington State when I had it. It's no longer, I no longer kept it up because it was costing, before the internet came in with CPE classes, it was costing me a couple thousand dollars a year to keep my license up. And I was really just doing charity and everything and I was in California. So I finally just said, oh, my husband actually said, uh, this $2,000 a year, this has got to go. So it went, but I worked in private industry in Washington State. I was working 30 hours a week, I was going to school full-time and I was studying for the CPA exam at the same time. You know, fortunately, I passed that. I ended up moving to California, I worked for accounting firms there and then I actually did, you know, worked as an accountant for some businesses. And, but, and my charity was, was an enormous part of my life. We were building a house, our second house, I think. And of course, I did the 25th event for one school, I did the 75th for the other school. And, you know, what is my theory, you always ask a busy person.
Yeah, right.
And I just need to learn how to say no more. But our county here, I, I love Descheds County. My husband is, we are thrilled that we moved here and it's a beautiful place. I moved here for the beauty of it. Over the past, what was it, like 20 some years, we would always bring our boys here for our vacations, you know, we were.
Did you go to Sun River?
Yeah, Sun River, well then we went to Bluffview, we went to Sun River. We always had the suburban with the, all the bikes on the back. And one year we were at the end of the 7th mountain when there was a fire, of course, right? You know, but I always would come here and then we'd always drive the back way through Spray to my family over in Hepner. So it's, you know, it's, or they would even come down here. They'd get off the ranch, so they'd come down here. So yeah, it's.
When did you, when did you come back to Central Florida?
Well, that's another interesting story. We tried to, my husband really wanted to retire, he was an ear, nose and throat doctor in Santa Monica. And in 2011, we were all ready to come back. The doctor they had hired to replace him, he was in a five-person practice, quit. Well, he gave notice and said he was moving to Arizona. So then they had to go through the, you don't just find any old doctor, you have to find a special doctor that's a specialist in ear, nose and throat. Anyway, that took a little bit longer. So in 13, we put our house, we sold our house, we moved and four days after we moved to the rental, he said, get in the pickup, we're going up to Oregon to buy the house. And really, it almost killed me. I was working, I was doing accounting jobs for people. I had to, I had to work all night so I could leave town. And we came up and we looked at six homes one day, six homes the next, you know, and we found our home.
It would take a little longer than a day to find it.
I know, I know, but we're, we're looking out in the country, you know, where we, we have a little ranch and.
You live close to Sisters?
Yeah, I'm right in between, actually, between Sisters and Redmond. Like, you know, it's, it's perfect, I love it.
That's great.
Yeah, I mean, we have beautiful mountain views out my window.
So with that accounting background, you said you've looked at the budget, the county budget, just initial pass in this, at this stage?
Well, it's an entry.
Where you would like to, you know, what areas of the budget you could go as cutting?
Well, this is what, you guys, can I, okay, the planning department seems to charge an awful lot, an awful lot. You know the deed of record, that people are now required, when they purchased land in the 1970s and they don't have a proper deed now, they have to get a deed of record, a new one. Okay, so I have an example to say about this, which is always so good to have a specific example. Okay, my friend had to go and do this. Her parents bought a ranch in the 1970s. She had to pay $950 to get a new deed of record for this ranch because they want to sell it. $950. Now, what happened is that she actually then had to go and pick up all the microfiche from the transactions, from all the documentation, bring it back to the planning department, they inspected it and then they signed off on that it's okay. I mean, she did like four hours of work, they're going to just review it and they charged her almost $1,000. That seems to me like a lot of money. And especially because the county didn't transfer over the records, you know, when they changed their systems. They didn't, they should have known that they needed to transfer over that.
So the county left those records on microfiche? And did not make a digital transfer or anything?
No.
So then when you go to do it, you, you are personally responsible for bringing the microfiche over?
That's what she said. I mean, this is a real smart friend. She goes, oh no, she goes, I had to pay the 950, then I went and did the documentation and then I went back and they, they actually gave the document because they want to sell. And on the website, it says it will take eight weeks. She went to them and they told her it was going to take 12. But I know they've just hired some people. I know, and they need to be hiring some more people.
Yeah, so back to my question.
Let me ask you this.
But that's just one, I think they're overcharging, I honestly do. I think to charge a thousand dollars for that, when, it just seemed like a lot of money. They, they maybe should have done the work to begin with and transferred over in their, in the life of the county. And they didn't.
But I'm just, you know, getting down to the, the bottom line of the budget. I'm curious, are there specific items, the county's in charge of health services for the.
Right, but a lot of that money comes.
Health and those things, like what are those things?
But see, those are a lot of, those are a lot of federal monies that flow in for the healthcare that comes in from the feds. So that's something that the county really isn't going to be touching. Those are federal monies, those are, those are perfect, those are allocated for federal, for healthcare here, it's a federal money, that is not a county.
Okay, but say that we cut, we cut one of these fees that is currently going to development services for the county. What parts of the development would you propose cutting?
I think they're, I think they're overcharging. But you, but you're, when you accumulate $15 million more in one year.
But they're spending that on something, they're not just leaving it in the coffers.
No, no, it's being left, no. They have enormous, enormous.
Reserves.
Reserves, they're, you need to look at their reserves.
Do you know how much their reserves are?
You know, I don't. I know that they have a contingency on the bottom line of their budget of $66 million and then there's another fund of like 32 million, which I really don't know. But I do know their reserves are enormous.
Do you go to county commission meetings on a regular basis?
I do, I go to a lot of them.
And what would you say that you've gleaned from them in terms of priorities that you would do differently?
Well, one thing I think that would have really been important, in fact, Tammy asked me this in the bathroom once. Originally in, when was it, 16, when I was testifying at a hearing, we, everyone testifying that day was, was on a three-minute timer. And then somehow that timer was lost in the shuffle this last year. And people just went on and on. People should have a three, you know, unless they're like the actual plaintiff or the appellant who needs extra time or their attorney, you know, those people should definitely have adequate time to present the case. But just people testifying, they need to have a time limit. And I don't know where that went to.
What were you testifying this part of?
That was from the marijuana advisory board. If you remember, there were, what is it, 13 people on that panel? And they asked for public testimony and we were all given three minutes. In fact, they said it might even be only two minutes, but it was three minutes. But I just remember that, I thought that was really important. You always want to keep a control.
Okay, so managing people's time during the meetings, there must be other things that would, that you would find as priorities, just having attended so many meetings?
So many meetings, well, I did notice that they have lottery funds that come in from the state. And one of the lottery funds, and then they're granted to companies and then if they follow all the rules and they employ so many people, then they're actually awarded the money at the end. Well, I said that to somebody one day about a Redmond company that was awarded, and, you know, like a 50,000. And they said, well, isn't, the comment back to me was, well, isn't that nice? That's a subsidiary of Warren Buffett. And you're going, okay, Warren Buffett is a billionaire and if that is really his company, maybe, maybe there are other companies, maybe there are other smaller companies in Descheds County that deserve that, that lottery money to help them get started.
So you think more scrutiny on the lottery money spending?
Well, it's, you know.
Because each commissioner, I believe, does get a kiddy of lottery funds to spend as they see fit on the county, or they're at least a purveyor of it.
Right, I, you know, that was just like feedback to me from the community was like, oh my gosh, that's Warren Buffett's. And I'm like, oh.
Right. So, but changing tack, maybe we can talk a little bit about marijuana in the county. You know, there's, it seems to be the topic of conversation in your praise. What is your position about the current regulations?
Current regulations? Okay, I would love to see the engineering standards given a little depth. I think that.
You're talking about the engineering standards for the grows.
Right, for the grows, the time, place and manner. I think the engineering, I hear every time, you know, engineers do is they sign off on a letter that it's going to work. But we live in America and America is so technically advanced. I would really hope that the engineering standards would be at a higher level than what they are now, I think that would be really good.
What would be the end to that? Is there, is there a specific problem that that would be solving that's not being solved right now?
Odor.
Okay.
You know, we have wind. And some people, you know, your house and the grow could be right here and maybe the wind only blows that way, but for other grows, you know, we have wind. I know our wind always comes from one direction and the dirt always comes from that way. So, you know, just better standards, I don't know. You have to replace the carbon filters, there's, there's all kinds of things happening there. And so I just think, you know what, let's improve those standards because we did, you know, specify that it's in a greenhouse. So if you're going to grow it in a greenhouse, then we need to know that the odor is controlled.
Do you think that, how do you feel about the permitting process right now?
Well, it's fascinating, San Diego County, which is a third larger than Descheds County, has 3 million people, only allowed for 40 grows in the entire county.
Does that include medical?
That's the recreational, I believe. I believe it's recreational only, but it was only 40. And so, you know, we look at, you look at Alphava where they allow seven grows within three miles, that's extreme, that's significantly impactful. And then you look at Tumalo where there are a lot of applications out for that area. And I honestly treat, our water is gold. And I know some people say, oh, it's not using that much water, but because of the operation of growing marijuana where they have to, they, the bugs love it apparently and they have to shower it all the time. And maybe the planet itself doesn't need that much, but from what I've heard, they, they do a lot, they have to, they have to keep the pesticides off and keep the bugs off. And I remember reading your article from a source, maybe it was six months ago, but you guys bought marijuana from four different sources through Craigslist and they all were loaded with pesticides. I'm like, oh, you know, oh my gosh. So anyway, I appreciate, I remember reading that.
That was a fun one.
Yeah, it was because it, but it is, it is an issue that, okay, if there is a pesticide issue, then you do want to get it off before you do your plant, you know, your production. And it's highly intense.
But a lot of the growers right now are complaining that the standards that the county has right now are inordinately high, that we have one of the higher, the highest standards in the state and, and that no other industry is put under this kind of scrutiny or standardization. What do you say to those business people?
I'd say, thank goodness we have standards. This is Descheds County and, Descheds County is a special place. It's beautiful, it's gorgeous, love our mountains, love our clean air and, you know, do people really want to listen to a lot of noise from all the units and everything? I mean, there's a lot of things going on, we have odor, there's noise, you know.
You feel it's fair?
Yeah, I feel it's fair.
And in fact, if you're elected county commissioner, you wouldn't mind seeing them held to a higher standard?
Well, no, that's why I said about the engineering standard for, I've heard a lot of things at different hearings I've been at and I've heard that really those standards, those could be raised.
Right, okay.
I think it's only fair.
How do you feel about the current, so currently there's 14 commercial grow operations in the county? Do you, if you're elected county commissioner, do you see that number decreasing, staying the same or growing?
Oh no, there's already quite a few over at OLCC. Although there's, isn't it like 20 more or something?
There's a few more that haven't opened.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's 20, but.
No, over at OLCC that just haven't been signed off on yet.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the ones that are, I know there's sun in the pipe.
But see, all the ones that are already over in Salem, those are all going to be, if those are all signed, they're all, they're, they're going to be here.
Okay, so let's say that in, between the time that you're campaigning and you're elected, those all get processed and they come through.
They're going to come through.
What's going to happen under your watch in the county for, for the people who are currently commercial operations? Do you see that staying the same, going down, going up?
You know what, I'm sure those are all going to be implemented. I did hear about a major grow that wasn't paying their bills. I know that we already have a glut on the market. And this major grow has actually had their nine propane tanks picked up by Northern Energy because they're not paying their bills. I've heard about grows over on the other side of the mountain that have shut down because the prices has been plummeting. You know, we have, we have the California effect and it's, and it's definitely, you know, it's going to affect the market.
So as a county commissioner, is it, is it your, do you see your responsibility being to, to view, overlook the market or just to regulate what is applicable in the county and its laws?
I think we have to look at the county, what's, what's really happening with our water and what's happening federally with the laws, you know, with the federal laws. So, you know, maybe there's going to be a change there. But right now, you know, there hasn't been. And we do have the statements from Billy Williams, who lives next to a grow in Hood River. So he's personally aware of the effects of, you know, the rural community did not vote for marijuana and we're the ones, we're the ones that are having it next door. So I just want to be respectful of everyone. The rural community has probably spent over $600,000 on maintaining their, their way of life and yet the county has only brought in $400,000 for the, you know, the income. So you, you know, I.
You think they should get more than the $400,000?
Well, no, that's what you've got today.
Yeah, right, the 400, the 420.
No, I mean, people say, but yet then again, they're going to be putting into operation a couple, people actually enforcing the law. And you know, the Oregon Health Authority hasn't really done anything. So with the change by, well, John Hummel, I had coffee with him last December, talked about him and I asked him about the medical grows. Originally, I think they were like numbered at like 1,800 and then I thought it was like 1,300 and I guess now it's 984. But John at the time acted like he really wasn't aware of what's going on. But the fact that John got together with Shane Nelson, our sheriff, who's been pretty emphatic about what's happening. And they actually sent all of our addresses over to Oregon Health Authority to see who actually is still a medical grow. So, you know, we'll get an answer to that soon.
I'm interested in that because you mentioned paying attention to federal law, yet that is kind of in violation of federal law when you try to, you know, get in on HIPAA regulations, you're actually trying to supersede federal law in that regard.
You know, it's interesting because HIPAA laws are like patient confidentiality. Patient confidentiality and yet this is actually a manufacturer that's going to deliver to patients. You're not asking for the patient's name, you're, this is just a medical manufacturer. So I, I guess I found it interesting that HIPAA went to the manufacturer, we're not asking for the patient's name, we're just asking for the manufacturer's name.
Which could be the same in many instances, the same.
But it's a good point.
I don't know, it's, yeah, you just kind of look at it and go, hmm.
But I'm just, I'm just curious about this. In my mind, it appears to be an inconsistency between adhering to federal law in one regard, yet not really caring that patient privacy is federally mandated.
Well, someone actually, somebody asked about it in the paper one day and I thought, no, we're not going to get that because of HIPAA law. I just think that it's inconsistent.
Absolutely, that's my point.
Well, no, no, I meant, the law itself is inconsistent, I'm not, it is the law and I know it's the law, but I just think it's inconsistent. So, but you're right, maybe, okay, so they are the patient and they do have the grow, so that's why we're not going to get it.
And I'm just, what I'm trying to get my head around is, you know, your supporters and I think your campaign is characterized as being anti-marijuana, like, and I don't, is that a fair characterization? And it's so, like, what does that, if elected, what does that look like? What is the impact of that?
It is, it is the law in Oregon, it did pass. And I do recognize the law. I would have preferred that, you know, it would have gone into industrial park like Colorado, but they didn't. So it is the law, I just want our county to continue to have the safety and values. I was at a workshop for marijuana one day, a couple of months ago, and the employee in the county said to all the commissioners and everybody present that people that live in the country are scared to death. I mean, honestly and truly, I've had my name in the paper a lot and my mom is, I guess I shouldn't say this. Anyway, my mom is like, are you really, should you be doing this? They are scared to death. A lot of people are frightened, they don't want their name out there. That industry has a lot of money. I've seen 50-page rap sheets of people that are applying for marijuana operations. I was, I was sitting at a lawyer's office one day and he went through, he actually counted, there were 50 pages on this man's rap sheet and yet he wanted to be certified as a marijuana operation. So anyway, what the county employee is saying is people are scared to death. And they were supposed to report complaints and put their name in and everything. And so this woman said, you know, people, Descheds County residents are scared.
I'm not exactly sure what you mean, they're scared by, that there's a lot of people in the industry?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, people of the industry. They, they're living next to a grow, are they going to come over and they're going to poison their dog? They come over with their guns, they get in their face. They do a lot of things to people that live by them that are very, very intimidating. I listened to someone who was talking about buying some, a gun. He was feeling very intimidated. And I have a couple of neighbors on my street who were all detectives and lawyer, Oregon State Police, et cetera, in my neighborhood, and they said, oh, he better buy more than one gun.
Okay, so talking about the county, the county specifically and how the county is regulating it, what I've heard from, based on watching the, the videos of the meetings, the, the main issue that came out of the one-year review was odor. Now, is odor a safety issue? That is a verifiable, the, the things that have been verified by the county code enforcement.
We were talking time, place, and matter is what they were basically reviewing. Did you hear what the sheriff said? Did you listen to what the sheriff said the other day? He said this needs to end. No, Shane actually walked up to the front of the room. It was at the hearing, I think it was about a week ago, Monday. And he walked up to the front of the room in the microphone, and he said, people are scared, they're scared, they're depressed about their property values. Let me tell you about this seventy-eighth school out in Tamalow. It had, it's got a grow on one side that's been approved, and then somebody on the other side. And they couldn't fight it. The neighbors in their area are in their seventies, they've lived here thirty years, they're in ill health, they need to sell, and they're worried now that their property values are going to be decimated. And, you know, what can they do? So I mean, just these are people.
As someone who lives in Tamalow, I can say that I, I was a lot more scared back when meth was the flavor of the grow out in the country than I am now for regulated grows. But that's an editorial aside. I think the other thing is that, you know, for a lot of people who are manufacturing out there, they're really afraid. I mean, I think that, and that comes to like one of the questions we brought up.
The manufacturing people are afraid?
Yeah, the people who are doing the grows. I mean, they have a lot of fear as well. They can't process their, they can't process their monies. They are worried about people coming on and invading their space where they're growing. I mean, that's one of the reasons they have such high defenses. It's not because they're just security. Security is their hobby, it's like, they're threatened. But it brings up my question that we brought up in the commission debate is that increasingly, this is the county, this is the county that, you know, has to be managed. There's a lot of conflicts. I mean, you see with roaming dogs now as the population increases and the, and the demographic changes. There's a lot more affluence out there than there used to be twenty years ago. You've got farming now, you've got McMansions going up. You've got people taking little falling down barns and converting them into, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar homes.
Well, that was just like I went to China Hat the other day. Someone had contacted me about that, and, from the Sundance Development, I believe, Sundance Division. And it ended up that somebody had moved five thousand pounds worth of shotgun shells and everything, and all this trap that every, it's, it's, they just shoot, you know, federal land. And people go there, and I guess they've gone there forever, and they've been shooting. But now that we have so many people that live here, that really maybe should go to the range first and have a lot of help. But there's this group of homes that are one point three miles from the actual spot where people are shooting, and there's nothing posted. So it's like, please don't, you can shoot this way, but please don't shoot your gun that way because you can actually kill somebody in their backyard.
Yeah, we did a pretty interesting article on China Hat.
Did you?
It's become like somewhat lawless.
Yeah, it was a dump.
And people are living out there. I mean, it's, that changed. But my, but going back to my question was, you know, with, with the increased conflicts, how do you see yourself being mediator of that conflict? Or do you want to be?
Okay, no, I do. I was talking to an artist in Sisters a month or so ago, and we were talking about things. And I know I got typed as, I really do care about kids, and I've always cared about education. I think it's such a critical thing. Anyway, we were talking, and then it ended up, we wiped out the door and we had another half an hour conversation. And I go, Susan, I go, you can see, we really do have something in common. It was, it was pretty amazing, we were talking about, the Sisters bond passed for, originally it was fifteen million, it didn't pass, eleven million, it passes. Well, two weeks after that, the Ben Bulletin has it in the front page of the paper that they're getting another four million dollars. And I'm going, where is this money coming from? I'm like trying to dig to the bottom of it. It ends up, when you get your bond passed in Oregon, you go to the top of the chart and you get an extra reward. Instead of giving it to a school district, let's say John Day hasn't been able to pass their bond issue in three, you know, in three tries, no, Sisters gets it. Even though theirs passed and they got eleven million, so they got another four million. Well, it ended up, they wanted, the city, the people, the school district wanted to build a bus barn with that four million dollars. And this woman said, oh my gosh, it was the most ridiculous spend of four billion dollars. She goes, I was thinking that they could have done something actually for the schools. So she actually was part of the activist group that stopped that. But I see, see, we're on the same page. We really do want the kids to be the beneficiary of it. The other day I was talking to.
Can I ask one question about that? And so as a county commissioner, how would you see yourself speaking in Salem or working in Salem to mitigate a problem like that, a supposed problem?
You know, I, I really like, I really believe in trying to look at all sides. And sometimes your decisions aren't the most popular, but there's always the unintended consequences. But I really do, I do really care about people. I really do, I, I feel like I can hear all sides and actually bring it together. I don't know, I.
Would there have been a specific step you would have taken if you would have been a commissioner and heard this story? Because it's not.
About the bus barn or?
Yeah, I mean, I know that's an allocation from the state that's something separate.
Yeah, I would have said, okay, guys, I really think this needs to be changed. I would definitely call up, you know, my senator and my representatives that I have relationships with and say, you guys, don't you think this is backwards? Shouldn't we be actually helping the schools that can't get there? And I've heard the same thing about Redmond's. They have a bond issue up on the ballot for seventy million, I believe. And if they get that, they're going to get another little benefit on top. And I'm like, oh gosh, aren't there schools? I know where I'm from, Hepner, they went to a four-day school week decades ago. Decades ago. And you know what? You really can't do it all in four days.
Yeah, Redmond did that at one point.
Yeah, did they? But then they went back. See, my county has never gone back. And I would love for them to go back to a five-day school week. I mean, the kids there are very involved in the community and FFA and 4H and everything. It's a farming community, and they do rather well. But still, I think five days a week is, is better.
Patty, you, how do you see yourself, like, right now, or you've been critical of Tammy for the amount of time that she's been working in Salem. Do you see yourself cutting back, if elected, you would cut back on the amount of time over there?
Well, she's on, she's on, she has several appointed commissions, you know, the Transportation and the Housing Stability Commission. So those are appointments that she has. And, you know, I know I need to work in Deschutes County. I think we have a, a major, we are a major force here. And I, you know, where I would need to, of course, I would be going there, but I really feel like there is a lot to do here. The fact that the tower that was removed from that plan, you know, the Harris Plan, it's fascinating. No one seems to know why the tower was removed. It wasn't a money issue, the money was there to put in that tower. How did that tower get removed? And then there was supposed to be a meeting by the nine-one-one system in the fall, maybe September, October, and that meeting got canceled. And I think I would have, considering how important that department is for the whole workings of the county, I mean, our whole entire relationship and all the police departments and everything, I think I would have been in their face saying, excuse me, but why are we canceling this meeting? Because I think those people, they already knew they had a problem. The commissioners didn't know till December's.
In terms of important, items of importance for people in our area, I, I do believe housing and transportation are two of the most important issues and are influenced by monies and legislation in the state. So I'm curious, would you see yourself, just if you were, if you were offered those appointments, wouldn't you see those being beneficial for, for Deschutes County to, to move us forward?
I don't know, I don't know if Deschutes County actually got anything special in that five billion dollar transportation bill. I think if you look at the allocations, Deschutes actually come up with anything?
Well, we, we, you know, we got the Cooley Road interchange. I'm not sure, I'm not saying one way or the other we've gotten it or not.
Was that really that much?
However.
Was that, I mean, was that really that significant? And then you look at the overpass down in Lapine. Did anybody get fired over that? I was just in Lapine Thursday, Friday, talking to people, and the fact that the state didn't do a drill initially. If you go to the ODOT website, which I did, I went to the website and it said, clearly they needed a drill of two hundred and eighty feet, and that's very unusual. Well, they didn't do a drill of ten feet, you know. So it's like, did anybody lose their job? Now we've got the twelve million dollar overpass that's going to have to be taken out. So, I don't know, when you look at Cover Oregon from the state, the three hundred million that they spent, and how many people did they register? Zero. And then you look at the Columbia River Crossing, they spent a hundred and ninety-five million dollars on that. And do you know what they forgot to do first? Is ask Washington State. They didn't ask Washington State. Washington State was not interested. I mean.
So we're talking about state issues.
Wait, we're talking about state issues, and I'm just saying, my focus is going to be on Deschutes County. If I could do something that I think is really good for our relationship with the state, of course I will. And I think I know some of the, the really good players. I think Senator Benz has been, he's stepped up, and he's over there, he's in the Senate now, and I think he'll be a good liaison for a relationship. Daniel Bonham, the new representative replacing Huffman in my, in my area. You know, he's, he's somebody that we can really reach out to. And, you know, we'll have to see what happens with Jane Wisniewski.
With that, so with, in the primary, not always common to have a challenger to an incumbent candidate. So tell us why you believe that voters should support the incumbent.
I went and looked at the board, in the Deschutes County Board. I believe in really term limits for almost everything. I've signed a petition for term limits. Ms. Benny's been in office for twelve years. There are two judges and one other person on the wall of all the photographs of everyone that has served Deschutes County on thirteen hundred yards from West Paul Street. So I, I really believe in term limits. And, you know, it's, it's, everyone has a different, and I think I am uniquely qualified because of my CPA background, that I feel like the dollars we're talking about are so significant, and the accumulation of dollars and reserve within our county are something we need to look at when I hear from a lot of people that are working through jobs. And they are, they're really having a hard time. I, you know, they're, I, I hear their story, I hear the pain, I know what they must be going through.
Patty, do you, do you have any final thoughts about why, why voters should take you as county commissioner?
They should take me seriously?
No, just vote for you.
Why they should vote for me?
Yeah.
Because I am uniquely qualified as a former CPA, as a person who actually does care about everyone. That's one of the things I do, even before I was running for this race, I always talk to everyone. I always like to hear what their story is, what their goal is, what their vision is. And it's, I think I'm, I'm the kind of person that will be accessible to people. I've had several people contact me about things that, you know, trying to have, can I do anything to help with that? But I do know, I do see the picture, I see what's happened. And another thing I think is really important for our county commissioner is I think we need to really maybe do a billboard, but we need to really work on our nine-one-one system, the reverse system. And that's something like a public service. But when I lived in Malibu, the fire went around us one year. It's a really frightening thing. And we had a nine-one-one system. I remember once getting a call from Xavier Osowski saying, oh, the, the fire is in Porter Ranch and it's going to be to the ocean in like fifty, you know, I mean, there because you have eighty mile an hour winds. It can be there so fast. My friends almost died in Santa Rosa. The fire went around them, eleven of their neighbors died in October. And we need to know our nine-one-one system is actually connected with everyone in our county. I mean, are, do you have a home phone number?
No.
You don't? Is your, is your cell phone connected with the county, do you know?
Not that I know of.
See, is yours, Jimmy? Do you have, no. See, you guys, you really can't afford not to have that connection because what if something really unusual happens at like two in the morning? And then would you have your cell phone on then? But you really need to think about it because my friends at the Santa Rosa Fire went to bed that night at nine o'clock. They got, they had no call. The wind finally blew up, you know, the blowing, the wind, their trees were going down.
Is your phone connected to the camera?
Yes, I have a home number. But you know what, it's at the other end of our, of our first floor. And I'm like thinking, and my husband has a fabulous hearing, but would I hear our home phone ringing? But we, I do have a, you know, purposely I have a home phone because you never know what's going to happen in the world, and I just want to always be, be prepared. You know, the county has a great plan, they have, you know, you should have a grab bag, you should have all these things. My friend didn't even grab clothes when she left that night. She didn't grab her phone, they barely, you know, they barely got out with their life. And that was her husband who was almost, we thought was having the heart attack.
Oh.
So see, yes, I know. I mean, that's why it was incredibly, but I, that's something I really want to work on. The other thing I really think would be wonderful if our county could really focus on is working with Habitat for Humanity. They have such an amazing worthwhile program for housing. The statistics are excellent for families who can get into homes. And when you actually, they actually have, what is it, a five hundred hour commitment to getting a home and getting a mortgage and getting a, that's, to me, is like, that is a wonderful program that Deschutes County Commissioners should definitely be promoting.
Do you support, on that note, the donation of more Deschutes County land to affordable housing projects?
That's, that's the one.
Okay.
Yes, because there's actually a real reason for it. You know, they, they have a training program. It's not just handing someone something.
So not just any developer, only Habitat would be?
Well, no, no, I'm just saying, those are, that's one that I think is really important to focus on. And then the other thing, I don't understand, Jamie, about Deschutes County. Is it within our county that it's not legal to have granny apartments? Like, when we were looking at properties, we saw a property once and they had an apartment there and we're thinking like, oh, that would be great, we could rent it. And they said, oh, no, that's not, that's not allowed here. Is it the whole state?
It depends on, oh, you're talking about in the wider county?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's any regulations on the Airbnb's as, in terms of.
Well, I was, no, I was actually talking like if you had a, a small house on your property, like we have ten acres. What if we had a little house that we could rent out to somebody? But I was told that it wasn't legal.
Well, were you in, so this was not in the city, it was outside the city?
Yeah. Because we only looked at country property.
I know they, they've talked about having more regulations on that. I don't know what the status of it is.
Okay, well, there's a sophisticated name, not calling it a granny apartment, but.
ADU.
Okay, ADU. I know, I love those things. So accessory dwelling unit or something, is that it? Oh, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian. Anyway, I call them granny apartments, and I just think.
Mother-in-law suite.
Right, it's, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
You know, that is a win-win, that is something that we could really do. And I talked, you know, I told you, I talked to the girl yesterday. She's pregnant, she's married, they're having a baby, and they live in a trailer. I hear about a lot of people living in fifth wheelers.
Yeah, I don't want to talk at a tear about what that is. I know there is something going on around ADUs in the county, but I'm not sure. If it's lowering the SDCs or, or something to that.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that is, that's a win for everybody. That, that gives the girl that works at Sisters Coffee an opportunity to live, you know, like, at my, at my place, or your place, or wherever. And, you know, it's a win-win. I always, you know, I always love it when you have a win-win.
Definitely.
Patty, there was one last question I wanted to ask. What do you, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing the county? I mean, what's the number one problem? What do you, what do you, what do you think you'll be spending your time on?
Well, I was just at the Redmond Annual Economic Lunch. And, you know, the unemployment is really low, they're bringing in all these jobs. I mean, things are really at a high level right here, and, you know, people are coming to our community to, you know, with their businesses, et cetera. And then I was, when I was at Lapine Friday morning, they were having a career fair for the high school. A year ago, they had eight businesses at it, this year they have forty-one. I mean, Lapine is really putting itself on the map. They're really having an incredible community spirit. And so you, you look at all this positivity, and I love positivity, and yet I always, you know, you have to think about the future, are we going to have a drop again? You know, right now I think growth is something. You know, right now, I think growth is something, but I really don't want our fees to continue to keep going up and up. Like, I, I think that that just further compounds the unaffordability to people that are here because they're retired or they're, you know, they're working, they're in the service industry, and I, I really want them to be part of it too. I don't think we wanna have just county people that make $300,000. I, I like, I love diversity.
Great.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
Campaigning is a,
Oh, it's not your, isn't it?
My hat's off to anybody who gets in the ring.
Well, thank you so much.